So it says we are live on YouTube.
Okay, thank you, Christie. Welcome everyone to our, this is our special meeting of committee of the whole. November the 30th, it's being livestreamed electronically. So welcome to everybody. We do though have a resolution which is not on the agenda as you see it. We got a call, I got a call just within the last hour that Andrew cannot be with us. There's a situation arose that he cannot be with us. And to, we're going to open this meeting with a resolution that Christie is going to read to us and then we'll get a mover and seconder and vote on it. So Christie, if you could read, if you could read that to everyone, please.
Yep. So the resolution is that council appoint Public Works Manager Stephen Rothwell as the Deputy Clerk Administrator for the Special Meeting of Committee of the Whole for November 30th, 2021.
So I would need a mover and a seconder for that. So it's been moved by Claus and seconded by Jeff. All in favor? Or anybody, nobody's opposed, I don't think. Alright, that's carried, thank you everyone. So Steve, then you're going to be sitting in tonight and Christie and the two of you, between the two of you will be able to help us to write anything down. And I suspect that most of this meeting is now going to have to do with questions that we will be forwarding on to the treasure. That will be about the best that we can do now. Unless we get all of the answers in the world answered by Public Works Steve and their fire chief and there will be way to the races, but we'll, we'll do our best. So I just want to also remind all of council that we, if you have any disclosure of interest, you can declare it now or anytime during the meeting. And as I said, we'd have no delegations and we've only got the one report and that is the budget, that's going to be the first draft of the budget. And though because we don't have Andrew with us, we'll have Steve to help us. So Christie, yes?
I don't, we, we need to approve the agenda.
Yes, okay, thanks. So we do have a resolution, we do have mover and seconder for that and so it was moved by Jeff Carroll and seconded by Ian Straight, that the special meeting of committee of the whole agenda dated November 30th, 2021. Be approved as circulated. All in favor? Okay, that's carried, thanks. Okay, so now we're going to, then we're going to continue the, the, the meeting as we planned it. But Steve, you can head this up and I think like I said, do, if you wanted to make any remarks at the beginning, that would be good. But before we do, I have some questions here. I see Aine and Claus, so Ian.
Reeve, I'd just like to declare a couple of interests with the fire department in regards to volunteer remuneration. When we get to that point, if we can keep that separate so that, from any of the other fire conversations, so I can back away from that, that would be, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Yes, thanks. And Claus?
I'll save it for later, Reeve. Thanks very much.
Okay. Okay, so as I said, then we're going to be going through the budget here as it is, but it'll be a little difficult without Andrew, so we won't be able to get all the answers that we have, but, but I think the best we can do right now is to make sure that we forward those on to Andrew and we can make note of it tonight. And I think that, so do you want to make any opening remarks here first then, Stephen?
I, I don't believe so. Just say, any questions council has, I'll answer.
Oh, okay then. So before we do, they'll get into the first section there. Which is going to be page one. That's under the revenue. And I think that all we can do is to kind of go through it, maybe page by page. And if we have any questions. And when we come, I think when we, it might be, it'll be a little bit easier, I think, once we get to the, any of the public works or the fire and so on. And we've got two people to help us there, but, but for now, we'll just kind of go through what what, what the questions are. And I guess, on that first page there, if everybody's on page one under revenue, right, the first thing that I looked at when I read it, when I first thought it was like under the taxation, the very, very first line that you have to deal with. We've got the 2021 budget, we've got the actual, and then we've got the proposed budget. And when I subtract the, the, the 2021 budget off of the proposed budget, I believe that if my math is correct, it comes to about ninety, ninety, almost ninety-seven thousand. So I guess my question would have been, then does that is, are we starting off with that, with that being representative of what the increase is going to be? Does, does anybody have any comment or answer to that? Karen?
That's the projection just on our municipal levy.
Yes, exactly.
That's just the municipal, so, but when we go to the back, we're going from a four million forty-three thousand nine fifty budget to a four million one seventy-two one hundred budget.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah.
Okay, so does anyone have any question on that? On that, in that first page, Karen?
Yeah, so I was just going to be asking Andrew. I see where we have projected that we would have fifteen thousand in municipal levy write-off, but we've done none to date. Just wondering about what he's received, but then also with.
May, can you give the number? What number is that? One ten, what?
One ten, one twenty-five, four ten.
Okay.
And then the, the next, the next one that jumps to me is one ten, one fifty, five zero four six, the OPP records check. I mean, it said at three thousand, it's showing nothing for this year and yet we're going to estimate another three thousand for next year. If we've got nothing, just wondering if we should be changing those.
Okay, so, so Christie, you've got all these, if you want to, if you slow us down, if you, if you, if you need time there, okay, so I think if we, if we just circle those for, for now, that's, those are good questions.
Yes, I. I have everything so far, so good, so speed's okay.
Okay, and Karen, any other questions on that page? Okay, I, I'm going to go to you Jeff, but I just also under that payments, payments in Louis.
Yeah.
What, what, what is the tax assistance municipal? What is that? So if we can just circle that, then that's, yeah, I wondered what that meant. It's going from seven to ten, but we're going to propose the budget back at seven, so I'm just wondering exactly what it is. Okay, so I'm going to go to you Jeff and then Claus, Jeff?
Yeah, I guess a couple of things. I did quickly email Andrew, just asking about the numbers that were there in regard to the increase. And, and his response back to me was, there is a two point seven percent, two point seven six percent increase from growth. So the increase, what I got from that, from that is saying that it's not from, this is not showing any increase in taxes, it's just a two point seven six percent from our growth. So I don't know if that answers that sort of that question that, that he had before, but I'm sure Andrew can clear that up. The other one too as well about the the OPP, the background checks. We might, we are going into a new year next year for elections, and that might change committees, that might change other things, so I don't know if that has anything to do with what we're going to have to do, police reference check to be more for committee meetings or for, for, for the new ones, or that might fall into 2023, I don't know.
Yeah, so, yeah, so your, your, your thought may be that we, we, that there'd have to be more record checks next year.
There might be more if, if, if we're changing, they go, obviously with an election year, if there's a, a change in committees and, and people like that, there, there could be.
Yeah.
I mean, five thousand is still pretty high though, because I thought like a police record check was in that, what, thirty dollar range? So I mean, I don't think we're going to do that many, so I agree with Karen on that for sure.
But it's, it's three thousand, right Jeff?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what you started, yeah. That'd be like, what, a hundred checks?
Yeah. Okay, thanks. So Claus?
Yeah, just a simple question, Reeve, the Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund. Three hundred and thirty thousand last year, three hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and thirty-two thousand one hundred, is that something that comes automatically?
Like, that, that is something that was, was, was automatic, but we had had a, we had some communication from them months ago that they were going to keep the same remuneration this year.
Okay.
The OMPF funding, which all, all municipalities were getting this year.
Right.
It would be nice to think that it's going to be an ongoing thing, but you never know.
Well, that's what I thought.
Anybody else want to answer that?
Well, the, the OMPF used to be a lot more than that, didn't it? It's been being scaled back considerably since, I think since the United States.
I think it was up over the four thousand at one time.
Yeah, but it was up and down and it was not consistent whatsoever, so. Okay, thanks. Karen, I think you had your hand up also.
Also noticed under the one ten, one fifty, five seventy, the POA provincial offenses and bylaws, so these are the fines that should be coming to the municipality. I mean, we budgeted fifteen thousand, but so far we've only received two fifty. I mean, it could very well be that they're just late in getting the money to us, but just curious how much, like, if, if we could find out, you know, this reported two hundred and fifty dollars could say, for example, only be to April, not to October, like the rest of our financials.
Yep. Thanks, Ian?
And the pillow from the Galapo Center in St. Paul's staying stagnant over from this year to next year? Are they not, are they not doing buildings in there and growth?
Yeah, I guess, I guess that would be connected to like when, when the assessment is done. So you're, you're right, they're probably, I don't know this, but I would think that they are doing some construction in there, but, but because it, it seems like it's the same money. But that's maybe because the, it hasn't been reassessed since a certain amount of work was done. I'm not sure of that, Ian. Okay, so then we're going to move on to our next page, if you want, over to the next page and then, well, that's the end, there's only licenses and permits and it's, any, no questions there? If not, then we'll move right into the next page, which, well, it'll be page one, but it'll be page one of the expenditures, if everybody's got that.
On the lottery licenses bill is if we go back to COVID, like out of COVID, is that the standard? Because I mean, we haven't really had much revenue for the last little bit, right?
No, that's right. Yeah, that's correct. Okay, now on, onto the first page, the first page of the expenditures. I, I, I'm going to open it back up to council, I, I have a couple of questions, but I'll keep till later here. Ian, please.
First of all, there's the, the COLA, I'm not in agreement with four percent. I think that that's a little extravagant. I would like to see that in public pools or, or down around two, myself. And secondly, the insurance. Is it actually going down? Do we get a, do we get an actual quote from the insurance people to, to verify those numbers, or is this a guesstimation? Most, most of stuff, oh.
Yeah, no, so the insurance, like the, the, the budget at twenty twenty-one budget and proposed twenty-two budget is, is pretty well the same, right? Five hundred dollar difference.
I think what Ian's asking is, is that a confirmed number from our carrier or just an estimate? Because most insurances did go up.
Okay, so then that's a good question. So again, the question then for Andrew will just simply be, is this confirmed and, and, or not? Or is it, is, is it proposed? And the other question there, or I guess it was a comment then, Ian, about the COLA. And I, I actually was going to ask about that too, but maybe we can deal with that because you brought it up. Can somebody explain to me like, like what, what, how did we, how did we ever get to the, to a four percent? Like, how did we do that? Yes, Karen?
So the personnel policy that was created and has been continued on for quite some years, references COLA so that it was a, a method that I guess council of the day thought that that would be how they could stipulate what a cost of living increase would be versus having council set a percentage every year for their budget. And that is how the past council put that into place. I believe it had something to do with trying to ensure that there, I think there was the ability to say that it didn't drop too far down or too high up, like for example, back in the day, I even remember when like some of the raises, COLAs were like twelve, twelve percent. And I think, so somehow along the lines wording seems to have been maybe amended a little. And that's where that comes into place. But it's just something that council then in turn can have a discussion on as to whether we're going to follow the policy or whether we're going to amend it for the budget.
Yeah, Ian?
Yeah, to elaborate on Council Jennings comments there a little bit. It was during our first term, we adopted that we put that into place, that policy. And the policy, the reason why we did it was because we were doing multiple we were doing multiple studies of, of pay scale studies at the time, and we want to make sure that we kept up with the, we kept up with, the, the salary range always kept up to inflation. But it was always at the exception of council of what the actual increase would be, so that we didn't have to keep on doing or paying for consultants to come in and do salary reviews, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah.
So I guess the question then is going to be like, I, I'm not sure, like, I think that maybe we should just like we'll, we'll red flag this, Steve, if you can put just red flag this. And then when, and then we'll just, because basically what we're doing tonight is we're going to receive all this information, we're just going to receive it as information, okay? And then any decisions that'll have to be made or maybe voting on things and stuff like that, this will be red flag item and we can bring this back and when, when, when Andrew's with us. Is that okay there, Ian? You brought this up there, is that okay then?
There you go.
Lost him for a second.
Yeah, I, I just got kicked off and got back on, so I don't know exactly what happened or how much.
I was, no, Ian, I, I was just suggesting that we, that we receive this specific information, as far as COLA is concerned, we just receive it for information now, but we red flagged this. And when we have our second draft meeting with Andrew, we can then, we can discuss it and if we want to change it, we can do it at that point. So I, I just felt that we should be waiting till he's back with us.
Yeah, sounds, sounds great, Reeve.
Is that fine? Okay then, Claus, you have your hand up?
Yeah, that's, that's fine, that's fine. I just have a question, Reeve. On the council, council advertising, council memberships, we didn't spend anything, but we're putting money back into the budget for it. I just wonder if it was necessary, I mean, council memberships, is that the Olmers membership or what is that membership?
With, for one, for one thing, we're, we're a member of AMO, AMO?
Right.
So there's one membership right there off the bat, so I, I, my belief, we can keep it down as a question, so that your, your question will be answered, but my belief right now is that, that, that the, the memberships, whether whether we, whether we're going through COVID or not, we're still a member of these organizations and we have to pay, we pay.
I just, I'm just wondering, like, did we spend eighteen hundred last year memberships?
And which, are you, are you under which number?
Number two ten, seven, three, eight, zero, eight. Two ten, seven, three, zero.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I see. So I'm just going to circle that as a question, so yeah, so that, yeah, because the question is like, the budget was eighteen hundred, we're proposing it, but we haven't paid it, but I don't know that, so that's a good question. Maybe, maybe the memberships are paid at near the end of the year for the next year, maybe they just haven't been paid yet.
Could be, I just don't, if, if, if we don't pay anything and so forth, I'm not, I'm not begrudging paying, but if we don't pay anything, why bother putting it into the budget?
Because maybe we haven't, maybe we don't pay till the end of the year.
Okay.
So it's still, it's still act, the actual is zero, but there's lots of bills to be paid between now and the, the end of the year yet. So then, they're not going to show up in here yet, under, under actual. Okay, Karen?
So maybe that's something we could find out as well from Andrew, was exactly when this budget goes to, like I made the assumption that it was to October with it being produced in November. So maybe we could find that out, but I also have, like on the two ten, seventy, forty, council conference accommodation and meals, the two ten, seven forty-four council conference meeting registration, and then the two ten, seven, zero forty-eight council conference transportation, they've all been, been dropped. And I mean, I know with COVID, we haven't been attending anything, but if we get back to be able to attend the conference for AMO next year and the registration comes through, you know, we'll need that money back, so I mean, if, if the estimate in billing for us to attend those on that assumption that COVID's over, this figure does cover us, I'm okay with it, but I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, so in, in other words, like the, like the first line, they proposed, the twenty twenty-one budget was seven thousand and the proposed forty-five, so there's going to be shortcoming there.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a good question. We'll put that, we'll circle that also. Okay, good, thanks Karen. Okay, then if we turn to page one of revenue, that's the next page, page one of revenue.
Revenue expenses.
Does anybody know the answer to this question? It's the very, very first line that I circled it, from one hundred and forty-six thousand to thirty-five. That's the one-time provincial funding. Now, I'm assuming, but I don't like to assume, I'm assuming for a minute till I get an answer. Is that, was that the one-time COVID nineteen provincial funding?
I think so.
So that, that'll be my question then, Steve, please, because, because that, that would mean then that it, it, it almost looks then that, I guess my, my big question then will, will be you know, there's a big difference there, so are we going to pick up money in the last month because of COVID? Are we getting covered for all of the things that we should be covered for because of COVID? And if so, then, you know, when is that going to show up? Because there's a big difference there. And then as you see, everybody, there's another, we deal with another COLA four percent in this budget or in this page too, so. Any other questions on this page? Okay, yes, Karen?
Again, on the two ten, seven forty, the admin conference accommodation and meals have been halved. The seventy forty-four admin conference meetings registrations are down by half. The two ten, seven forty-eight, the conference transportation has, you know, so just double checking that component, the same as we did with council, as to it being dropped. And I mean, it says admin postage is like by half. Is that because we've been successful in getting so many people on e-billings?
Okay, so I just want to make sure now that we get all these things circled, just read out the number, the last four numbers there, Karen, please.
So seventy forty, seventy forty-four, seventy forty-eight, seventy ninety-six. And then the question on the postage, seventy-one twenty-four.
Exactly, I noticed that earlier. But it looks like we've only spent two hundred and fifty dollars.
Uh, that's a credit though.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's credit, yeah, that's the revenue, yeah. Okay. Okay, thanks then.
Further down?
Yeah.
Further down? We've got seventy-two oh eight, admin advertising, like we're four thousand and seventy-six this year, but we're only budgeting twenty-five hundred, so what was the blip for this year? And then our contracted services are dropping from fifty-seven five down to seventy-five hundred, and we spent so far forty-one ninety-eight. So I'm not quite sure what that is.
You said under contracted services?
Yeah, seventy-two thirty-six.
Yes, yeah.
And then legal fees were higher, so we're dropping that back down. Our membership, seventy-three oh eight, are thirty-four fifty-six, but we're going to drop it down to two thousand. Those are the sorts of things that I think we would know exactly what memberships need to be paid to be able to have an accounting, like maybe we now know we need to put more in because of whatever got paid this year.
Yes, yeah.
And again, like seventy-three eighty, training and seminars, we budgeted four thousand, given COVID, we've done three seventy-one, but do they know what they have planned for training and seminars next year? And then at health and safety, we continue to put seventy-five fifty, sorry, we continue to put five thousand dollars in every year, but we definitely don't even come close, so I'm just wondering, like is it, if we know what training is needed by a schedule to, to know how much should be budgeted? Because I think we've got it in other departments as well.
Yeah, okay. Well, that, we'll go through these with the quest, when we get the answers there, for sure. Okay, now there is a second page on the revenue here, anybody? If you flip over to that, page two, revenue? That's under the admin complex. And no questions there? Yes, Karen, yeah, go ahead Karen.
Um, just curiosity, like we have this miscellaneous expense of six thousand, just wondering the seventy-one hundred, what specifically is a miscellaneous expense? We spent twenty-three hundred in it, but we're going to spend four thousand roughly next year. The next line being seventy-one oh four miscellaneous repairs, I mean, we've spent five forty-seven. The, the seventy-three seventy-two telephone fax. If we're up to October with eighteen eighty-four and we're putting three thousand in for that, just sort of curious. And then on the last line, the transfers to reserves, it makes reference to SCBA of twenty-seven thousand. Is that an ongoing that we put twenty-seven thousand in? And
Yes, go ahead, yeah.
And, and SCBA, does that not fall under fire department?
Uh, which one?
Admin transfers to reserves eighty twenty, the note beside it says twenty thousand is admin.
Yeah.
SCBA is twenty-seven thousand and then the complex is fifty, so my curiosity was twenty-seven, did we, was there a loan that we did to the fire department? That they're repaying us now, still?
Yes, I'll just, yeah.
Hi Karen, how are you?
Sorry, Miles.
Okay, that is correct Karen, there was some money borrowed when we purchased the SCBAs that we've been paying back twenty-seven thousand a year. Please don't quote me on this, but I think this is the last year and it's paid up. But I'd have to double check with Andrew on that, so thanks for the question, Karen.
I think it is as well, I just wasn't sure if it was twenty twenty-one or next year that finished, but all good.
Hey, thanks. Okay, moving on to page three. Under elections. Any questions there? Okay, seeing none, then we're moving on to page one. On the next one. On the next one. Okay. Everybody's keeping up there, said page one, okay? Questions? Yes, Karen?
Um, what's the miscellaneous revenue? Uh, this fifty forty for fifty five hundred?
Uh, just maybe it'll be easier, like if you just um, just give the last four numbers there.
Fifty forty?
Okay.
Third item on the revenue.
Yeah, I see that. Okay, maybe um, so Miles, can you answer that?
I'm sorry, Bill, I don't have one of them in front of me. What is it pertaining to?
Okay, so that, that's the, that's under the third line there, uh, under revenue, under revenue. Uh, fire miscellaneous revenue.
Oh, I, I can't help you with that, Bill, I apologize.
Okay, no problem. We'll get the answer from uh, from uh. From Andrew. The, the interesting thing is we're, we're, we're uh sort of focusing on the word miscellaneous. Um. When we were doing the budget up at the county. The word that they use was other. We kept questioning, well, what does other mean? So maybe other means the same as miscellaneous, but we're still not any further ahead, so. Claus?
Yeah, this question was asked before, we've uh item seventy eighty eight fire insurance. Is down, dropped it down by almost a thousand dollars. We're getting a discount on the insurance all of a sudden?
I don't know. That'll be another question for Andrew. Uh, it's ba- basically uh. Yeah, that's, this is under revenue, so. It almost looks like there is a bit of a depreciation in price there, but I don't know. So that's circled. Anything else there, Karen? Oh, yes, sorry, I'll go to you, Steve, first.
I, I believe there's an increase of seven hundred and fifty on that.
Yeah.
On the insurance.
Yeah.
Yes, seven hundred and fifty. So that, that's.
Uh, the other way around. Sorry, thanks, Steve.
Okay. And Karen?
So. Ian declared his conflict already though, so I'm just curious on the volunteer points. I know that it was something that we had a discussion on. Um. I don't remember when, it was maybe last budget. With reference to having him do a review of the area, because when Allison was here. Um, I had requested it to happen as well, because one of the other municipalities did a review. So I think Andrew's done it. So just Miles. Is this reflecting the results, or is this because our complement is increased?
So when it comes to the review, um, Andrew and I are in the midst of completing it. We have all the information sent to us. We just wanna put it in a nice little bundle for you and hope to have that to you for the twenty first. I believe of December. We hope to have that little bundle for you. But for these particular points right now, you've seen an increase from sixty five to seventy seven five. So, so what I've done is I'm hiring another four uh fire personnel this year. So I went from twenty five and I'm working towards a number of thirty. And, and it's mostly to cover my daytime calls. So I feel, you know, with more numbers, we can maybe have a better turnout for the. The eight in the morning till the four in the afternoon, which is very challenging. So I've added um actually five thousand there for four new members. And the other seventy seven five. Is a report that will be going to council also on the twenty first. And what it pertains to. Is I'm looking to possibly have a, a station chief. Uh, a deputy chief, just somebody that would make seventy five hundred dollars. Plus their points. And it's just for succession, you know, if something ever happened to me, I'd like to have somebody. In place that could do my job. So it's just uh, it's a report that'll be coming to council. We just thought it'd be nice to add into the budget. And uh, it'll certainly, you know, this is the first budget draft, so. You'll have the report and then we can deal with that at that time, if that works for all council members.
Sounds good, Miles. Okay.
Uh, Karen, did that, did that answer all your questions, Karen?
That, well, that answered that one, but hang on here.
Okay, yep.
Um. We're gonna do some public. Fire prevention, public safety. Oh, no, that's hydro, not wrong line. Your hydro forty eight hundred down to nineteen, back up to forty eight hundred. Oh, hang on, seventy eighty four, I apologize.
Seventy eighty four, yeah, um. Again, that uh, I, I, I can't speak on that number, I'm not sure. Uh, that's just a standard number that we've done every year. Why it was only an actual of nineteen, I'm not sure.
Okay, okay. So the one I was looking for was on the um seventy forty conference accommodation and meals. So we've got three thousand. Once we get out of COVID, we're planning on having some more stuff for people, correct?
Uh, correct. That's a conferences to a year that we usually attend. And it is very valuable for new equipment, new training. So yeah, when we come out of COVID, maybe we'll get back to normal.
Exactly. Um. So if I go further down. It says. Oh, seventy three eighty two debt repayment. Twenty eight one, is that referring to the SCBA? Because I think it was.
Yeah, that's it, isn't it?
Okay, cause on. On our transfer, it's twenty seven thousand and here it's twenty eight one, that's all. It's not major differences.
That's the number Andrew put in and that might be the final, you know, type payment. That's why it's a little bit different.
It's.
I, I have to let Andrew answer that better.
Yep, I got my note, thanks. Again, so here's another.
Yeah, we're gonna keep that one down as a question though for now.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Um, question, big one, Miles. Seventy three eighty fire training seminars. Fifteen thousand to twelve thousand to fifty five thousand?
Yeah, so um, as we completed our survey in Lanark County. Of fire department trainings. We uh, we don't currently pay any of our volunteers to go on the training. Uh, they go with their own gesture just for the community. So when I did the survey, it looks like. Every department in the area pays a perdemium of. One hundred dollars a day to a hundred and fifty dollars for an eight hour day for training for their members. It's not something that we currently have paid in the past. So that's why there's quite a big jump there in the numbers. Again, we'll be uh, you know, we're looking at forty thousand basically, and you know, that would give us. You know, thirteen days of training for like five members. I believe, you know, Andrew's broken it down that way. Again, his numbers kind of um. So maybe we could question that and get you back with a little more information on it.
Okay, just, just a note on that one. It actually literally, if that's what it's for, is the perdemium has to go back up in the wage line, not in an expense line.
Okay, okay, Karen.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, we'll have to make note of that for Andrea. So I, I think you're aware there is a perdemium. Most counselors, I'm not sure if you're aware of that, but they do pay. For their training and I, I believe they should, you know.
Yeah, cause they're, well, I can answer, cause I mean, we do it in current place. They're actually literally taking time from their full-time jobs. To attend this training, so it's a stipend. It's not a lot of money towards it, but it is a stipend to offset.
Correct, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, then we're going to move on. You're back in with us on. Okay? Okay, good, thanks. Um, moving on then to. Flipping right over to another page. Well, there's page three. If you can look at the page three where it says uh. Under building, building service. Everybody have that? Building, equipment and emergency? Uh, clause?
Sorry. Well, I had another question for Miles on the fire expenses here.
That, that's okay, go ahead.
Uh, we budgeted eight thousand dollars for furnace oil. We used thirty seven fifteen, we're budgeting another eight thousand. Is it because all the bills are not in for the, for twenty twenty one, Miles?
Uh, that would be correct. All the bills aren't in, but also we've changed from furnace oil and have gone to propane. In the fire hall now because of an incident with the uh furnace.
Yeah.
So we weren't real sure what it was gonna be, so we thought we'd leave it. At the eight thousand to see how the propane.
Okay. Fine, thank you.
Yes, Karen?
Uh, seventy two thirty six fire contracted services peer support. It's a five thousand dollar budget line, but we got no expense in twenty twenty one. Is it just a bill that's outstanding yet, Miles?
Um. No, it's a, it's kind of a. It's a little grace. Period there. If we ever had an individual that needed the peer support group, we'd like to have a little buffer there. You know, if they came with any problems, then we needed to get a, you know, a um, a peer support member to help them. It's just kind of a little area that we don't get caught. And have no money there for something like that.
Okay.
Okay, then. And so. Is everybody okay then flipping back to page three? That starts building equipment and emergency, that page?
Mm hmm.
Okay, any questions for that? Not, you don't have your hand up in, do you? No? Ian? No?
No, I don't.
Okay, sorry, I just thought maybe I saw your hand, okay? Uh, okay, so then moving on then to page four, there's nothing there. We'll go on. Next one, then we're back to page one under expenditures for the eh, the ta- of the revenue and then the expenditures. Just to help you there, that's page fourteen of forty, page fourteen of forty. See no questions there? Moving on to the next. One, page one. Revenue expenditures, that's page fifteen of forty. Karen?
So, under uh sixty one twenty fence viewers compensation. Just wondering, I mean, I think there they've been out, I think they've had some meetings, et cetera. So just wondering how come there's been no reimbursement or no payment to them? Is it done just at the end of the year? Should it not be done? Cause I see one under the livestock value risk compensation, so. Would it not be done, say, for example, on a monthly? Monthly basis payment to them or even a quarterly basis?
Do you know that the fence viewers have been out?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they were.
Okay. No, I'm only, it was just a, a question because if they weren't, then that would unders- then we don't, that, that would, there'd be a void there. But if they've been, then we put it down as a question.
I believe they were.
Okay, no problem. That's, that'll be a question, uh, how come there's no payment yet? Okay. Next page. That'll be page sixteen of forty. And I don't think there's anything there then. Then we're going, moving right on to page seventeen. And uh, now this is where you'll be able to maybe take part a little bit more, Steve, because there's also notes, if everybody makes sure, and if you've read all of the notes in the right side. Uh, so uh, any questions here? Maybe first, do you have any comments to make on this part of the budget here, Steve, so far? I mean, not to this point, to, on this page.
Um, no, I, I don't think so. There's uh, under. The expenditures capital, um, there is a one for Pioneer Road. Um, counselor or council asked for the numbers going forward on Pioneer Road, the uh, since the two thousand sixteen roads committee. Suggestion, um, so staff put together some numbers to um, realign a couple of the corners. Um, so this would be for two corners. East of uh, the. East of Weedmark Corner, it wouldn't include Weedmark Corner this time, as Weedmark Corner would be. Um, in the planning phase this year, um, making sure everything in line, and that would be something that'd be revisited for twenty twenty three budget. Um, but this would be the widening of two corners. And uh, staff opted in the pricing for widening of the corners instead of realignment. Um. As a full road realignment would be uh, much more expensive than this, but I can provide those other numbers at a later date if they'd like them.
Okay. Claus?
Item seventy three oh four, the line painting. Do you plan on doing a lot more line painting this year, Steve?
So staff uh, from our recent contractor, we received a notice that, uh, uh, like everything, it seems, there appears to be a shortage. Um, they said that they expect a thirty percent increase in their supply. Um, a- and then uh, staff did put in for a couple more white lines on some pretty hazardous um, corners that we have. So there is a slight increase in volume, but it's more or less a uh. COVID factor, shall we say?
Okay, thanks. Uh, Karen and then Jeff, Karen?
Oh, go ahead with Jeff, cause I got lots.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Okay, uh, I guess a couple of uh, Steve, uh, thanks. So I guess when I look at some of the uh, the ones on the, the tarship for code road. I know it's a, it's on our primer, uh, priorities or roads, and it's, it's talking about a full, like a full reconstruction. And this, I'm assuming is just a, is a, is this sort of an idea that's gonna prolong that road? Is that the uh, why you're putting that in the budget?
Exactly. This is a proposed maintenance activity. Um, at this time, it, although the Roseany study stated for that, it, it doesn't require full depth. Or partial depth at this time. Um, we definitely gain another five years of that road for a pretty ineffective, or pretty uh, cheap cost compared to a partial.
But if we do the partial, then we can kind of work towards, I guess, cause we're gonna need some, probably some funding in order to do that one, I guess, too, right? Is that, is that sort of the same for uh, for Harper Conry? Cause that's the same idea, right? It's on the uh, the priority roads?
That's correct, yep.
And uh.
Sorry, Jeff.
Uh, I was just gonna ask, like, yeah, a couple more.
Be clear there. Sorry, Jeff, just to be clear, I just wanna make sure everybody's clear. When you're, when we're talking about code there, we're on top. We're talking about from Roger Stevens up to uh. To the end of the pay, the end of the pavement there, right? Yeah, okay, sorry, Jeff, back to you.
No, that's cool, yeah, uh, thanks, Ray. Uh, and it's, I see like a sweeper for thirty thousand dollars. Is that, like, we had talked about an attachment that goes on the one ton, uh, 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 sorry, the, the new three ton. Is that, is that what it is, or is it a separate unit altogether that uh, for that sweeper?
So this proposal from staff is for our backhoe. Um, we feel it'd be better on the backhoe than our three ton. Um, and it would just be for doing some intersections or um, residential areas. And also, I think everybody's been to Rosedale Hall. There's about an inch of material on the ground, so activities such as that is what uh, we'd be using, would be for the backhoe.
And then we wouldn't have to rent anymore, right? Cause every year we pay a couple thousand, is it, is it a couple thousand bucks a year for rentals, so?
Yeah, and. On, on the rental, it's a. Previous years, it was very specific roads. Um, whereas I, I do believe. Many of our roads should be getting more attention than what uh, was there. So that would be just making sure that we can do it ourselves instead of contracting for all the roads.
And as, as, as far as the plenary goes for that, the realignment, uh, which is great, uh, are, are you gonna have a report that come to us before, like the next budget meeting to kind of talk about? That idea, just to make sure that we have a, a good, a good gist of it, I guess?
Yeah, I was kind of hoping uh. You know, if this was another week, it would be great at the same time, but yes, hopefully uh, we'll see a report coming forward next, next Tuesday.
Excellent, okay, that's, that sounds good. I look forward to that one, Steve. Uh, I'll let Karen go for a bit now and uh, if I have something more, I'll come back, but thanks.
Hey, Karen?
So right at the very start, the forty eighty six, the pits and quarries grant that we get. We're budgeting ten, but we've already got twenty six thousand one thirty three. So should we not be basing that as our base for next year? Unless we're expecting some pits and quarries to no longer exist.
I will uh, check into that number as uh. That is what Andrew had received, so we'll uh, definitely double check that.
Okay. And then on the next one, it says forty ninety, it's a public works revenue, other municipal roads. Is this grant money we get from somebody, or what are we getting seventeen five eighty eight for? Do you follow me at forty ninety? Yeah?
Yeah, I'm with you there, um.
Okay.
I'll check into that one as well, I can. I'll talk my head.
Is that? Yes, Ian?
Is that from Ottawa? Would that be?
Yeah.
I believe that might be under forty ninety five, but I will definitely double check those numbers.
Okay. So then our. So then our next number is the fifty-forty, which says miscellaneous revenue other. We budget five hundred, but this year we got like set thirteen thousand seven fifty-four.
I believe that, uh, could be where the auto expenditure went, but I will confirm that Andrew put it to where he put that. Because we do have a couple of standing bills in that amount from Ottawa, so I'll just double check that it went to the right spot.
Regarding these type of expenses, Steve, uh, is Mike correct in thinking that what we do with, uh, Drummond North Elmsley? And what we do with, in terms of cost sharing and so on, with, uh, Beckwith? It, th- those are both a wash, right?
Uh, with Drummond North Elmsley, it is a wash. Um, the cap, larger capital obviously goes fifty-fifty like last year. Um, and then Beckwith is about the same. Uh, leave this year, we received a, um, invoice for road grading on, uh, that they completed last year. So I had this year, but it was actually completed by them last year. Um, and again, going back to a report, I'm going to complete a report on all of our agreements. Just so council kind of has a, uh, understanding of what we have on our surrounding municipalities.
We don't have with, we don't have one with Merrickville-Wolfe, do we?
There is no present agreement with Merrickville-Wolfe.
Yeah, I, I often wonder if there should have been one, maybe, uh, with, uh, part of the, uh, road there, uh, the Montague Road coming out from Merrickville. You know, because there's a, you know, not very long of a gravel road that belongs to Merrickville-Wolfe. And then it's, then all of a sudden, it's, it's Montague. So I'm, I just don't know if the same person plows or grades that whole road. Because it would kind of make sense, but anyways, that, we'll leave that to you.
Uh, it's only, it's right to the boundary, both municipalities maintain their section. Uh, it's basically, they don't let their plow per se, but you know, go to close to turn around and then, um, go back and kind of how that works there.
Yeah. Okay, so Karen, back to you.
Yeah, so then under the seventy-eight-eight for, for our insurance, for public works insurance, just to see too, whether or not we know what our numbers are from our insurance company?
I, I do believe Andrew was receiving that, um, last week, but I'll definitely confirm that.
And then the seventy-one hundred, where it says miscellaneous expense, we've got a credit for sixty-two dollars?
Uh, yes, there was a municipality short on some, um, rail addressing. So we, uh, did invoice them for some of the signs that they bought off of.
And now, J- before I go to you, Claus, did you have another question, Jeff?
Oh, this time, no.
Okay, Claus?
Yeah, I think you're just a small one on uniforms, Andrew. Is that purchasing new uniforms or the maintenance of uniforms?
So, so that there is, each worker is, uh, allowed to purchase a one-work boot. Um, and then we, we purchase two uniforms per employee under that item.
I see, okay. That comes to four thousand a year?
It is very expensive for public works uniforms, yes.
Well, that, would that be supplying some of the PPEs also?
N- not per se too much, um, we, we did supply chainsaw pants under that. Um, I think they get more use, but, uh, it's more or less your daily wear is what, uh, what goes under the back line item.
Okay. Ian?
Yeah, um, Andrew, quick question, Code, uh, Steven, sorry, quick question, uh, Code Road. Um, the other portion that isn't chip and dip or pave, whatever you want to call it. Um, is it able to be done, or is there a significant amount of work there to get it prepped, to get it ready to, to be done?
That's a great question, um, staff did do, I did a pile of work on, uh, on this section, just trying to get our, our costing. Um, I was very close to putting it in as a priority on this one. Um, it, we were about two hundred thousand for that, to put another six inch of the granite on it. Um, and then some localized improvements along it. Um, so it is on the radar. And I, I think we will see it in one of the upcoming budgets, but, uh, the council would like me to provide that, uh, report on the costing. I could definitely bring that.
I personally would like to see it, Stephen, I would, I'd be very interested in seeing what it would cost to, uh, I don't know if there's consensus to do that from the rest of the members of council or not, but I'd be definitely interested to see what the cost is to, uh, chip and dipper the remainder of, uh, code. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I, I would also comment on that, uh, council and, uh, and Steve or, uh, and you brought it up, and I, I think it's a very good point, and I know that it's been brought up, uh, you know, for a few years and, uh, previous, this, pre- previous to this council also. But I do remember when we first started talking about it, we had to do a lot of preliminary work, Steve. So to hear you say that you've done a lot of work already, that's good. Because I know at the time when we first started talking about it, because there were a lot of road, there were a lot of people living on Code Road. It was a through road all the way through to, uh, Rosedale. Um, it, it kept making sense that we do that, what Ian, you're suggesting. But, uh, uh, but we were always told that there was a whole bunch of, um, I, I think we talked a lot about ditching. So there was a lot of ditching had to be done, possibly widening, I'm not sure, but certainly ditching and, uh, and tree work, tree removal, that, those two things, there was a lot of work to be done now. I, I, I guess, to go along with what you've just said, is that the type of preliminary work that you've been doing?
That's correct, we've, uh, we've done a lot of color replacements along the section, um, some minor ditching improvements. And then if you've been down, we've, uh, definitely widened the sidelines and, uh, pushed out the trees and. So that, that's a lot of work that we, uh, have created cost savings by completing that work ourselves, so, um, that's kind of onsite work, but behind the scenes in the office, uh, there's a bunch of work to get the other costs with that, but.
Now, I was just also wondering there, just because we're talking about code. A few, a few years ago, I noticed that it was near a bend where there was a hydro pole uh, that had, uh, lights, uh, lights on it. And I don't know who was paying for the lights or whatever, if they were even working, because it seemed that the lights were covered up with trees mostly. But, but it also seemed that at that particular bend, there was a, like a pole that seemed often close to the road. And so I'm just pointing it out that maybe it's something that if staff could look at, because if we were going to be doing lots of preliminary work, that, that pole would probably have to be moved back or something, I think. But, uh, because it's been brought up there, Ian, you brought this up, code, code drive. Um, if, if it's okay with council, can we then red flag this issue? And then, uh, when we sit down with, um, Andrew the next time, that this, this issue will be red flagged. Because I see this as a fairly, uh, fairly big bear, it, it'll be, it'll be an impact on the budget. But, but council can discuss it again with Andrew, is that okay? All right, so that'll be red flagged there. Okay, next question? So then we're going to move on, uh, to the next page, which is page two, sorry, page two of the Public Works, any questions there? Moving on then, page three of Public Works. That's nineteen of forty, page nineteen of forty, okay, Karen?
So, um, I know Miles said that they switched from oil to propane. Is that the case with Public Works to go from six thousand so far as actual to still fourteen thousand in the budget?
Uh, that's not the case, we, we have not switched over. Um, that, that line item has fluctuated quite, quite heavy, uh, just with the winter and that. Our, our furnace doesn't really shut off from as soon as it goes below five degrees till it gets above five degrees. So it is a cost that could climb very high in, uh, the next month.
Okay.
So see no further questions, and we're going to move on to page, that's four of this same report. Number twenty of forty.
Can I ask a question, though?
No.
So if you go back to page three.
Sorry.
See, I, I just kept going anyway. Back to page three, there's item seven zero six eight and seven zero six nine. And I remember them telling us that somebody wanted carbon tax noted separate. But is there any true reason why we need that still separated? It's an additional step that Andrew or whoever has to keep punch does it, so is it truly necessary?
The carbon tax, you mean?
Yeah, somebody before me on council, somebody wanted that separated. And I mean, it is an additional step that Andrew does, or whoever has to say codes has to do it. Is there any real reason or just put it back altogether under the seven zero six eight, under the fuel charges?
What, do, would that have anything to do with the climate issues?
I don't know.
I'm just wondering, because, uh, I think we're all supposed to be trying to do something, uh, you know, with our, our, our emissions and so on. Is this a way to keep track of, uh, the carbon? I know, I'm only questioning it, so this, this will go down as a question, though, Karen, okay?
Okay.
Okay, then moving on to the next one, page four, that's twenty, twenty of forty. Yes, Ian?
Yeah, yes, Stephen, uh, the crack ceiling, sixteen thousand five hundred that we never did before, what's that? Where is that for, yes?
Uh, so I have that listed, it's for Bristow and, uh, some spots on McCray, just hoping to seal up our road as best we can. The more maintenance I feel we do, the better long-term solution we'll have, so, um, just another little maintenance item that we can do.
Perfect, and the four soft spot replacements, where are they?
All right, so that's, uh, there's been a few, there's money, money boundary, which we identified last year, there's much on tinery. Th- this number could have went very, very high. Um, so we're, we're trying to isolate the common ones that we've, um, seen from myself and then from the staff from before. So we'll be determining kind of as we go through the spring thaw this year, the ones that are reoccurring, we're definitely going to address the major ones. But we're going to try and move as long as as many roads as we can within the budget, it's kind of the thought there.
So is that like, is that total reconstruction type thing in those spots, seem like fabric down and the whole deal?
Absolutely, yeah, that's GB, I'm starting from bottom up.
Awesome, great, thank you.
Um, the, the one item I would like to, I, I was asked about shouldering numbers. Um, I, I didn't include anything in, in this draft, I, I have done some numbers. Um, there's a couple of areas on Matheson, and then, uh, one of our main roads is Rosedale North. Um, i- if we were to do for numbers, there was about five thousand meters of shouldering through. There's multiple, um, areas with the county that we can do a tender with. It works out to about twenty-three thousand for five thousand meters of shouldering. Um, it is a pretty expensive operation, but it's one that it, it does pay dividends if it is completed. But it's another number for council to consider if they'd like to see that, uh, move forward or not.
Yeah, um, I did see another hand a minute ago, maybe it was Jeff's, I think, first, Jeff?
Uh, thanks, Stephen, I guess one thing is you're, like, you have a proposal here for like a, a good chunk of gravel. So is that something we need to go back and tender for? Is that something we can keep with our current contractor and they're gonna, uh, for the pricing that they have? Is that, is that kind of where we're going with that?
That's a great question, Council Carol. Um, so right now we have a two-year contract with our existing contractor, our year one went extremely well. Um, next year we're locked in at the budgeted amount, and then we have two optional extensions for one year. Um, and that will be agreed upon between the municipality and the contractor. Um, and, and that's all based on our four-year cycle for gravel maintenance. And hopefully every fourth year we'll be back into the first roads.
So that, so that's basically that the, the overage that we're doing it, we're able to, to get it at a locked-in rate? That's, that's, uh, is that what it is?
Yeah, so for twenty thousand tons, we're locked in for this year at that budgeted amount, and that's what he tendered, um, the contractor. And the next year we revisit it at the start of the year and before budget and lock in for the year. Ahead.
Okay.
If I'm answering that, sorry, if not.
I, I think mostly, I, I guess, I mean, we're going to continue, we don't have to go to a different contractor, we don't have to go out and re-tender. It, it's, it's all under that same contract and it, and it, and we, I mean, our, our rates of what we got it for depended on where, how far the roads are from their pits and all that kind of stuff, right? So I guess, I, I, I guess like to my curiosity sake, is like, is we're, we are getting the best bang for the buck, because we're still continuing with that, uh, same mathematical equation against far away they are from the pit, uh, uh, as far as what they're going to cost it.
That's correct, and, and the, the value we're seeing for our granular M is, uh, across the county, it's, it's a really good value, so.
Yeah, that's what I thought, all right, thanks, Stephen, thanks.
Karen?
So, Steve, you mentioned Matheson and shoulders?
Yeah, so I did have a resident reach out, um, with some concerns, as, as there was some areas along Matheson that they appear not to have shouldering or, um, whatever went on. Um, so this would be some more or less localized improvements along Matheson. Especially if, when we're driving, you can see some breakage, uh, along the inside corners. We definitely want to make sure we, although spending additional funding on that is, uh, not what council's here. But I think a little bit of money spent there is going to reward down the road as, uh, we're not going to see that breakage as much if we, uh, rein, reinstate the shoulders. Um, so that's kind of where those numbers would be. And then there was, uh, Rosedale North, so instead of trying to sink it all into one, I've tried to put a bit in both roads is what would be there. But that's something I could definitely bring forward to Andrew for a second, if, if, um, council would like.
So I guess my question would be, because Matheson was just done, so this is already an issue?
To my opinion, yes, this, this is an issue that, uh, shouldering would need to be addressed.
And, uh, Jeff?
I, I guess on that, I know, because I, uh, as I see a lot of council members stir, is there, is there a, is there, is there any type of guarantee from our, uh, our engineering firm that we spent, I believe it was a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars to make sure that that was done correctly? Uh, to go back on, or now that that year is over, we don't really have a, a leg to stand on per se anymore?
Yeah, there's nothing, uh, the, the warranty phase is completed on Matheson Drive. Um, I, I did do some research upon my first couple of days, and, uh, already by then we're out. And, uh, there, there was nothing left that we could have, what after them to try and reinstate that.
Okay.
Okay, so see no further questions on this page. Uh, turning over, there's nothing on page five, page thirty-one of forty. So we'll go to page twenty-two of forty. Under expenditures, and that's the streetlights, any questions on the streetlights? Uh, Claus? You're muted, Claus?
Okay, uh, this budget is strictly expenditures? There's no, nothing in the budget for additional? Or a survey of additional or needs of streetlights someplace else?
Uh, staff did bring forward a report, I believe it was, uh, early this year, and there was no, uh, there was no indication from council or resolution to, uh, move forward with any additional street lighting. So staff has not provided any additional street lighting this time.
Okay.
Okay, then moving forward, uh, under twenty-three of forty. That's the expenditures, uh, for the airport equipment capital. Any questions there? Then moving forward uh, to page one under the water and the sewer and water. That's page twenty-four of forty. Andrew, the next time. Who's that? I heard somebody.
That came, said Andrew the next time.
Oh, I'm not sure, anyways.
Online.
See, I'll go to you, um, Karen, did you have a question?
Yep, I have some several questions regarding revenues to the expenses, but I think I'll email Andrew individually versus trying to go through them with Steve. Yep, I have some several questions regarding revenues to the expenses, but I think I'll email Andrew individually versus trying to go through them with Steve.
Okay.
But I did note that there was no COLA listed on the wages on this one, but it was listed on all the others.
Okay. Okay, thanks then, so we're moving on to the next one, that's page two, and there's nothing on page two there for that. So we'll go on to page, the next one, page one, uh, that's twenty-six of forty, that's under the revenue and expenditures, expenses. Expenditures, I should say, for the uh. Uh, blue box, stir chip, composter, trash tag, sales, and so on. Any questions on this page? Karen?
So on the revenue for fifty seventy-four, we're expecting. That much?
So, so this was a, this was a tough one, um, what this was is kind of going for our large item pickup day. Um, trying to pull what is expected, so we basically went, if every single household was to use the larger to pick up. Um, our expenditure at the below reflects what the revenue would be for that. So basically, those are two numbers that are going to kind of be a moving number, um, once we see what our first uh event brings in. If if that kind of answers what that is, so that's kind of our. If everybody did use it to make, this is kind of showing our user pay system will work if I use.
So, so you're comparing fifty seventy-four to seventy-one sixty-four?
Uh, yes, that should be, just let me find here, seventy-one sixty-four, yes.
Okay.
So on that note, I I ran some more numbers to kind of, you know, make sure that we're breaking even, and and basically. Our our number to focus on is that we get four hundred residents that are using this, that's kind of where we'll break even as a user pay. Um, once we have four hundred or four hundred items that are our place of the curb. In that range due to pickup costs, that's kind of where we'll start to see that the user pay is uh covering all expenditures for that.
Yes, Karen?
And then from the seventy-three thirty-two to seventy-four oh six, all those contract costs are directly from our contract?
That is correct, yes.
They're not estimates, okay.
Ian?
Yeah, I just wanna thank Stephen Ashley for all the work he did on that, that's a pretty good initiative, you put uh, put your uh effort in there, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then, I'm gonna move on, there's nothing on the next page, but we'll go to twenty-eight, twenty-eight forty. I think that's probably fairly clear, that's the expenditures for the cemeteries and. And bursaries and so on, do we have any questions there? Karen?
So what is the jump on the seventy-six forty-five, the jump from six down to three up to thirteen-five?
Okay, we'll get that to 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 Andrew then. Claus?
Yeah, thanks, we, we didn't hand any bursaries out to the school this year at all?
I don't recall.
I don't recall either, I'm just wondering.
If I don't recall uh anything like that, but I can all follow up with Andrew for the next meeting, just to make sure.
There's a possibility it had something to do with COVID and the schools being shut down in part of this past year too.
Well, I'm what, I'm just wondering if we didn't do it this year, could we double up uh in twenty twenty-two? Since COVID, pretty well over with as far as the schools are concerned. That's a question.
Okay, I guess we'll just red flag that question then.
Yep.
Yes, moving on to the next page, uh, that's page twenty-nine. And that's under Hall Randall's history books and so on, that page. Karen?
So under the eighty twenty recreation transfer from reserves, there's twelve thousand dollars in fencing? Paddling launch of five thousand? Um. But I'm not sure why it's coming from reserves, cause I thought that was the money that was coming from the county grant. Or the paddling, and then I didn't know we were doing twelve thousand dollars in fencing.
Proposed budget for.
So, well, is some of the fencing, when we're talking with fencing here, that's, we're talking with fencing down Rosedale Hall, right? Yeah, okay, okay. And I I thi- I do recall in one of our. I thought in one of our meetings, there was some discussion about uh the problems that was taking place down there and the possibility of doing fencing and so on. So it it might have been just, i- i- it came up as a dis- in a, as a discussion point, but now this is, it got into the proposed. Proposed budget, so, um. Uh, Steve, I'll let you speak to this, please.
Yeah, so there there was, I believe it was six thousand budgeted in twenty-one for fencing. Um, so I I reached out, and I know there was some concerns about Rose Dale Road South and traffic from the playground. So we we reached out with the couple contractors to get some pricing on a fence between play structure and the road. So that's where this would be, it's a, it's chain link fence, it is a quote that we received, and then that would be the cost, I think it was about a hundred feet. Um, down a hundred meter, yeah, a hundred feet down on Rosedale Road South. Um, and and it's more or less just a safety issue with the playground there between um playground and road.
Yeah.
So again, um, I guess what he's saying is the recreation grant on eighty thirty of five thousand is going to end up going to reserve. Because that's where he's then gonna pull it out of the eighty twenty, but.
Yes, that's exactly what that would be.
Where would be? It would just be part of the overall, there's no surplus in recreation. Um. Because the transfer down below, the recreation transfer reserves of fifty thousand didn't include that part.
I I will confirm those numbers with him. That was uh eighty twenty and then eighty twenty down below as well, or eight revenue and admin?
Yeah. Yeah, cause eighty twenty is where you're pulling it from a reserve in twenty twenty-two. Eighty thirty is where we're going to get the money this year. But then the eighty twenty down below was only the budget of the fifty we originally said we'd put in for ongoing, but if we're gonna do that. Grant there, we'd have to move it over, because overall it shows the deficit, there is no surplus for us to say, that's what's being moved. And then the uh twelve thousand of feasibility study is just. What's expected to be left over from our original thirty thousand study?
I have doubt of that, Dylan's a question.
Hey.
So back to the issue there of the paddling launch, was that settled, that was clear to everybody, that five thousand dollars? That that basically is, is the uh, is the tourism initiative that has been passed down to us from the county. So what, um, yeah. Okay, so that's, that just goes on, it still goes under revenue to us, right, Steve?
Uh-huh.
Yep.
It's on.
Yes, yes, Karen?
Yeah, the, so I'm, I'm taking it, that's what that AED grant is? And that is the revenue, it's just that in twenty twenty-two, it's coming out of a reserve. Be at that five thousand brand of revenue, you have to s- get transferred to the reserve to come back out of it.
Yeah, I think we should just make sure and red flag that and check, check on that.
Steve does have that, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, and then, and then also, I think it's, I'm just, I wanna make sure that we red flagged it. And have a discussion then whether we're gonna spend this money on the, on the fencing or not. Um, you know, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll, I think that that needs some further discussion for sure. Yes, Karen?
So then further down, we have seventy-two ninety-six, the recreation janitorial contract. It said fifty-five hundred was budget, we spent four hundred and one actual, we're gonna budget fifteen thousand?
Um, what, what line, what should the number again now?
Seventy-two ninety-six.
Oh, yes, I see, okay, yeah. Okay, so we circle that one?
And then, further down seventy-five fifty, the recreation health and safety, they've spent six hundred and five, but I'm not sure whether that's. It uh, was it repairs? It's not, what specifically was health and safety?
Okay. Leave is a question mark. Okay, yes, Claus?
Um, back to sixty-ten, Steve, the forty-six thousand dollars for the capital expenditure, was that the septic system?
Yes, that would have been for the septic.
We didn't get any kind of a red grant for that, or we got no grants for that?
No, there was no grants for that.
Oh, yeah?
At uh, under the building miss, the bit, building there, uh. For the post office roof repair, are we talking about? Uh, the same kind of roof that's on it?
Yeah, yeah, so when the staff was down there last time, I I had a look, and it was actually a small pool that's in the uh. The one side of the roof, so just hoping to like-for-like kind of thing, we don't wanna make anything too uh. Too ugly there, but just trying to repair so that the uh water's not getting inside, basically is what that's gonna be.
But, but you, it's just fixing a hole in the roof?
That, that's the hope, I mean, we don't wanna disturb too much if we don't have to, so. We're kind of hoping that we can go in there and just replace what's there and put some uh similar shingles to what's there, not hoping to redo the hole, um.
Okay. Okay, but so, under that line there, Steve, uh, seventy-one oh four.
Yep.
That, that original twenty-one budget of four thousand, what all was that for? That wasn't just for the roof, was it?
Uh, no, we we have not completed a repair yet, um, there was some minor repairs throughout the building that we did under that item, as for. It, I can get that, but uh that was just some other minor things, that was not through.
Yeah, no, as long as it wasn't just for a roof, cause it's a pretty small building.
Yeah, no.
Okay, thanks. Anything else there? Then moving on to, I think we'll jump right over then to page thirty-one. Page thirty-one of forty. And that's under the Merrickville and Smith Falls Library, any questions there? Yes, Karen?
So the revenue and the expenses, are they just based off of a formula? Because they don't seem to change.
Yeah, the re- yeah, I think it is. Well, yeah, the sixty-eight sixty-eight, it it hasn't changed.
No, but I mean Merrickville was still at eighty-two, now Smith Falls had a small decrease for some reason, but just wondering why they remain stagnant, like there's not even. An adjustment, that's where I wondered if it was a percentage or a formula that gets followed as to how much we actually contribute to them?
Okay. Okay. Anything else on that? Then moving on to the next one. Page thirty-two of forty. And uh you'll see there, it's under all the billing, starts off billing permits. And questions there? Again, the same question comes up about the insurance. So I guess when we get the answer for one, we'll get the answer for all of them. Seventy, seventy-eighty-eight, they're under the expanded expenditures. Yes, Claus?
Yeah, just wondering, development charges, we had ninety-four thousand last year, but we're only budgeting sixty-six thousand. We're not anticipating a bit of a growth there. Or we got a big shot there last year, and it's gonna slow down.
Okay, we'll get that explained. Ian?
Yeah, the other one, uh, fifty-eighty-two, the severance notice list dates, I just, what what exactly is that, I guess, is that? We quit a revenue of only budgeted five thousand, but somebody else ended up with seven, so.
Five hundred.
Five hundred.
Or budgeted five hundred, my apologies. What was up with?
Sixty-seven fifty.
Quite a variance. I just wanna know exactly what that is.
Yeah, why did go from five hundred up to sixty-seven and back to five hundred? Sometimes there's very obvious questions, but we'll get those uh, we'll get the answers from Andrew. Yes, Karen?
So, for item eighty-eight eleven two hundred fifty-one twenty, it says use three fifteen two hundred fifty-one twenty. So when I go over to three fifteen two hundred fifty-one twenty, it says Colbert deposit fee. Just wondering why it reads that? And then it says forty-three thousand is going to be shared services for planning, so we're looking at getting revenue. Of forty-three thousand dollars to offset our expenses of planner. Unless we have an agreement, I think that's a little high. And then we go over to eight eleven two ten seventy-two thirty-two, that's under consulting fees. But we've put a planner position into there, so a planner position needs to go into a line that ends with sixty-one hundred as salaries. And then we need to have all the um additional costs for the um, the mandatory costs for like. Omer's, WSAB, all that sort of stuff, like the other benefit costs, so those would have to be split out, cause it will no longer be a consulting fee.
I I got everything in there other than the covert deposit circuit, that.
That's okay. Okay, so, you got that when you said?
Yeah, I was good with that one.
Yeah, so then across from that, we put forty-three thousand as revenue, and we're going to get it because we're gonna share a planner. I thought that was a little excessive on that estimate.
Okay.
Um, and then when we flip over, and we get to the seventy-two thirty-two, which is a consulting fee.
Yes.
That amount that belongs to a planner and salaries needs to go to a line that ends with sixty-one hundred. And then he needs the sixty-two hundred series costs created from that dollar value.
Yeah. All right, that that's Steve?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on those two pages? Then we're gonna step over to thirty-four. That's on the municipal drains. No questions on the municipal drains, I don't think. Okay, then moving on to the next one. Uh, the under revenue expenses, starting with council administration and so on. Page thirty-five.
So that's actually just a summary of everything that we've just gone through.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And uh now back to the other, it's just more explanation of the different uh expense and revenues. So I'm going to be turning now to page, to the next one, which was page. Oh, sorry about that. Page thirty-six, any questions on that page? Yes, Ian?
This is a list of the capital projects for the year, so am I on the right page?
Yeah.
So, my first question is to uh Stephen in regards to the storage building.
Yes, that's, that's a great question, um, so basically health and safety has uh, has. I don't put a red flag on the existing public works, storage building. Um just basically stating that it's unsafe and and the existing building is is not great. Um the other building was already taken down, so we're kinda, everything over the two buildings has been squeezed into the one. And uh so what would be proposed here is a s- long term solution for our. The uh material that are in that building and as well getting our. Assets that we have sitting out in the yard and the elements and they'd be moved into this additional building as well. Um wouldn't quite be as as large as the existing building that we have there for our salt. Um the the one thing I I have heard brought up is utilizing the salt shed as a storage. When we don't have a full, i- it's hard to do that when we don't know what the winter elements are gonna be. Last year, we were left with half of uh. Half the building full of winter material grit and grit still. Um so that's, I guess, sorry for the wrong answer, but that's kinda what that is, is just kind of a solution to get our assets out.
Yes, Ian?
So the the, do you have a size in mind, I guess? Like we took down two buildings, you're replacing with one, the two with one. Do you have a size in mind?
Yeah, so the size we're thinking is the exact numbers, it's about half to three quarters of what's there now. Um the numbers for going the same size were quite large, so we we. Thought we could, you know, better financially to decrease the size and uh reduce the cost as much as we could.
Sorry for pull up. So is this, is this another hoop building with fabric on it, or is it a?
That that's correct, that's what it would have to be, yes.
And they, now the fabric on the other one, oh, I knew it had some holes and stuff like on it. How long is it before it's? And need repair, yes?
So we reached out to kind of the um. Who built the last one, and they basically say that they they should last up to fifteen years, it's kinda their ideal, what they should have. Um obviously, there's some burn marks and different things on ours. Um they they stated there's nothing to be too concerned about, but definitely uh in the coming years, something to be mindful of during budget discussions is eventually that will uh. Will be something that'll come up, but they said it should uh should be a longer term than uh. How long it's been?
I'm just, I'm just wondering why we, you know, why we wouldn't go or consider like a steel shell building that's. Has a higher life expectancy, I guess, with lower maintenance costs.
I I can definitely look into something like that uh and and see what the cost could come back with. I could hopefully find something. By the next meeting, say, if that that works for council.
Thank you very much, Stephen.
Oh, thanks.
Further, yeah, Karen?
So was placement of this building in the same location as the two white buildings that will be removed?
Uh so preliminary, I I believe it would actually go on the other side of our existing uh coverall building right now, just to open up that area. Um it it really depends on what type of building we go with, but right now it would be kinda moving to the um. I guess it would be to the west of where the existing coverall is. So we'd be opening up more space um where the equipment's still at stage right now.
Yes, Ken?
And since we've had discussions with reference to renovations and add-ons and stuff, if we were to add on to the current garage. Or like to the base, does that still give us room for that addition for drive-throughs?
Y- yeah, sorry, not the uh, not the public works. Um it would be right beside the existing coverall in the back of by the derby pit. Um it'd be back in that corner is where this would be. So there would be, if there was any um drive-through bays or anything like that, there would be room to go around new building and uh everything like that.
So so we're not talking about like the administration building, fire building. Public Works garage, we're not talking about any of that right now. We're just talking about. And that a building for the storage of the our assets, right?
That's correct, additionally building for the rear of the public works.
Exactly. Exactly, yeah. And how how ma- when did we put up the salt shed?
I believe. Correct me wrong, maybe twenty seventeen or eighteen, I think it was. Um I'll go back as. Was it fifteen? I I did look at it, but it might have been fifteen then, but.
Yeah, I would guess it's maybe pushing more like ten years, but uh. But as far as those uh pinholes, it like the in it, the burn holes. Like, can they be, can they be easily repaired, do you think? So they don't leak?
I'm sure there's a patch for it. Um they kinda have something for everything, seems like.
Yeah.
Um but there is other, there is other holes in it, like manufactured holes kind of obviously for making sure that it doesn't blow up hard or anything. So it's not a huge concern, but it's definitely something that we could look at addressing, seeing what options are there to repair the uh unplanned holes.
Well, I I think it's very important, I think thi- this whole discussion and hopefully we'll red flag this and have it because. Because to me, it's pretty important. And uh we've taken down storage sheds and and it's not very. It certainly isn't advisable to keep any of our assets outside, that's for sure. So uh you know, whether we go with the uh the coverall or. Or a steel building, but one one or the other is is definitely important and should be definitely on the radar, but we'll have to. I think red flag that right away at our next meeting and 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 decide what we're gonna do there, because it is, it is a bigger expense, but we. But we can't leave our our equipment outside, that's for sure. Okay, uh anything else there? Or then we're moving on then. I think uh. The next, the next page had to do with the borrowing. Uh that, does anybody have anything to say about that, what we're doing there? So if not, then uh the next page is the draft. Development charge. Reserve funds. Oh, before we go on, I'm sorry, I did, I I knew there was, I was kinda pausing, I knew there was another question I had about the uh. About the the uh this salt shed. I'm just throwing it out there, like we we do. You know, we do put money into reserves and we put money into public works reserves and so on, but I guess I'm just wondering, cuz we we know, we know that we're gonna have to. Replace the uh the covering on the salt shed sooner than, well, I'm not saying sooner than later, but certainly we'll have to replace it. Does it make any sense? So that we don't get a big hit any one year for something like this? Does it make any sense that we have a kind of a separate reserve for the for the future of the covering on the salt shed? Like uh you know, even if we put a few thousand dollars into a reserve specific for that, we do that every year, then when it comes time to do it. We'll have it. Just throwing that out to council, we don't have to have, we don't have to discuss it now, but uh. If anybody has any questions or comments, then we can bring that back up again. Okay, all right. Yeah, yes, Ian.
Is that, is that cost not covered in the asset management plan? Would that not be covered under part of that, or no?
Yeah, that should all be kind of intertwined and all that uh in the asset management plan for sure.
And one question while we're on this of borrowing thing, if it's all right, uh Reeve?
Yes.
Is, am I reading this right, that the SEB still have a more year after this?
It finishes next year.
Yeah, finishes, so there's.
Twenty cents left over.
Yeah, twenty twenty two, yeah, okay, my apologies.
Yeah, and Jeff, did you have a question?
Just kinda reaffirming, uh uh those buildings are all on our roads, these studies and 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 it talks about their depreciation and as part of the uh. Of what is going into reserves for public works and everything else too as well, so it's already, it already is being budgeted, I'm just gonna bring that up, I'm just looking, I should reaffirm you with the uh with the study that's in there, so.
Yeah, thanks. Okay. Then moving on. Next page is page thirty nine of forty. And nothing there? Claus?
Uh not a question about the development charges, but I'm just wondering, maybe I've heard wrong, but. Was there some kind of talk that we could open up the door and spend development charges on different things? Different than last year or different previous years?
Jeff?
We're doing a review on that clause, right? Remember, so so we're, I mean, I'm sure we have it by now of uh if if we didn't have some of the staff stuff, but uh. Uh but we we gave that the the same for Simon, right? So he's gonna be coming up with something, so we can discuss that.
Okay.
I thought that, well, that's good.
Uh Ian?
No, Council Carol, we kinda already hit on it there, so.
Okay.
Get the study come out or get it started.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, then we're moving on to our very last page, that's the salary range, cola adjustment four percent. So I guess, I guess we we'd kind of um red flagged the co- the whole issue of COVID. Uh till later, but this this is more specific. Does anybody have any comments here then? Karen?
So you're talking about cola and the fact of. Four point nine percent is the policy or a different value?
Yeah. Yes, Steve?
Yeah, so um. Andrew kinda touched on earlier, they wanna speaking with them, so basically our policy is a four percent maximum, but our salary range. Will move by the full four point nine percent of what it is, so the salary room, salary range moves four point nine, whereas our cola is limited at the four percent. If that makes sense to you.
What?
Yeah. Go ahead, Ken.
They have to match.
So our policy is cola is four point or four percent as a max, whereas our the existing October, October is four point nine.
But you can't do a four percent. Versus the four point nine, if we're approving a four percent, then that range has to stay at four percent. Same as if if council chooses compared to the four point nine, cuz. Probably Ian or counselor straight brought it earlier, a different value, then that's what this would change by.
Okay, that's. That was just in conversation with uh Andrew, basically, the the adjustment will be made strictly due to policy, the policy stipulates we're only allowed four percent. Um that's a maximum due to the year to year, whereas our the actual cola data for the salary. Is at four point nine, so staff would not be getting a four point nine, the range only increases by a four point nine. Not the pay per for employees in council.
Yeah, but but if we don't approve a four point nine, cuz the the thing is your range, your range is based off whatever is approved by council.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jeff?
I mean, just to touch on that, it's a tricky one, cuz even for twenty twenty two, there the, some of the numbers are coming out, they're calling for a cola adjustment of five point nine percent instead of uh. Instead of four point nine, so I mean, but I guess the hard part is, I guess that's where we have to make a decision as council, because if we ever have a time or inflation, we have uh it goes down. We're not gonna obviously uh uh cut staff pay and say, well, you're gonna have a two percent pay cut, so I mean. It it definitely isn't, like I I think to make sure there's good understanding of why it's open for discussion, because we may have to be looking at a balancing effect too as well, because. Uh you know, the, we 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 might be going to twenty twenty three or twenty twenty four, and hopefully we don't have inflation going at at these record numbers. Uh we could see some, we could see some drops, so I mean, I think it would be a good point to have a good discussion point of of how we're gonna keep it balanced and and. I mean, it's a guessing game for us, what what the next three and four years are gonna look like, as we try to make sure that we kinda keep it uh at a steady keel. Um but it it definitely is is going to be a a tricky one. And what if, you know, obviously, uh we don't see a lot of drip and dip in inflation, I mean, we could go the next five years with uh with five and six percent inflation rates too as well, so. It's something that we have to think long and hard about as far as as far as how that looks, uh I think along with every other form of government too as well.
Yeah, uh Claus and then Ken?
Yeah, thanks, Reeve. With this uh cola adjustment and so forth. Uh if we keep going at that rate, we're gonna end up going above. The salary range at the high end.
Your salary range will always increase based off whatever is decided. Like this, this high range will adjust every year based off what council decides is the percentage.
Okay, all right. Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
And Ken?
So I know that our policy has li- uh as has linked it to cola, but I mean. Um we could, we could look at. The wording being changed, cuz I mean, I'm not sure exactly why the cola got put in there by the previous council. Um and I mean, the biggest thing is you wanna stay competitive with your area, so I mean, we wanna make sure that we're paying our min- our our employees. Fairly to our surrounding municipalities, so we would do normally a survey. Of your area to say, okay, what what are you giving your staff? Like, for example, uh have you set it at two percent, three percent? Like, what are you setting yours at? Um cuz that's the thing, if you're gonna have your staff shifting, you're gonna usually have it within your area unless somebody really is looking to relocate. So you wanna stay competitive with you, and and I mean, we're even bordering Leeds Brenville, like because Merrickville Wilford is a Leeds Brenville. So I mean, we wanna say, you know. The circumference around us, what are you doing? You know, like, I mean, I can honestly state that, like, Carnters put out a two percent. I don't know what person Smith Falls have put out with their budgets, I tried to research it to see, but I think that's something that Andrew could quickly send off to all the treasures and say. You know, what has been set by your municipality for a twenty twenty two increase? And even for reference, what did you do in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty? Just again, so we have some balance to say, instead of this cola. You know, that came into to play that. If staff got a point nine seven last year and the area municipalities still gave a two percent to their staff. That we should be staying competitive that way to see what is occurring.
Um maybe uh Steve, if we could ask um. Andrew to uh concur with the county treasurer, because uh. I believe that they may have some uh some stats there that could help us.
The county is higher than we are, though.
Yeah, but it's just to be still, it's they 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 may have stats though for the surrounding areas.
Okay.
Because they they do the same, they they survey, they do the same thing. They they survey the surrounding municipalities, but they also survey the the surrounding counties. But I'm just saying they may have some stats there to help us. Okay, and a- anything else then? So then that brings us to the end, and uh we have a couple of resolutions first here, but um I'll just say. Uh thanks to you, uh Stephen, for sitting in for Andrew and Christie. And um before we do read these, though. We always go to you and ask if you have any questions from the public.
Yep, I I have one question. Um the question is on the fencing at Rosedale Hall. Oh, dear. Um sorry, okay, so the question was uh on the fencing at Rosedale Hall. Uh was it not changed from a fence to some kind of tree or shrub break?
Yeah, Steve?
Uh there was trees for shrubs placed, uh but this is two different areas, that's between uh animals, this is uh. Toward between the place structure and the roadway.
And that is all the questions that I have.
Okay, so before, and now before we um. Before we go to the end here, I I had one general, just a general question that I was gonna ask right at the very first, and I forgot to. Uh right on the very first, well, the second page, page two of forty. So just inside the agenda, where we listed the different discussion and options points. There was one thing that was missing there. That I'm wondering if we could put it on the agenda, or red flag this question also for the next draft. And that is that I I've seen no. And there's been no question of any possible expense in the future. For anything to do with environmental and climate change. Some people are trying to call it climate crisis now, but. There's nothing in those sixteen points that says anything about environment or climate. And I I would like to put that on the, I'd like to bring that to Andrew's attention, but also. If we can put it, red flag it for the next uh meeting, so that we could have a discussion on whether we. If we can put it, red flag it for the next uh meeting, so that we could have a discussion on whether we. Should or shouldn't be putting something into this, because. I I'm under the in the understanding that we, like all the other lower tier municipalities, are part of a. Uh, this climate network. Lanark County Climate Network. And yet there's nothing said or or in in this to do, but what what are we going to do in the future? What are we gonna do year by year by year? In the future to do with climate change? If anything. So I'd like to put that on the, on the agenda for the next, for the next meeting. Uh, and so anybody, anything else from anyone then? Okay, I do have uh the next, I do have a motion then. It was moved by Karen Jennings and second by Jeff Carroll, that the direction given by council regarding the first draft twenty twenty two budget. Being presented in this report be incorporated into the second draft twenty twenty two budget. To be presented at a future date, all in favor? Thank you. My next, the last one is moved by. Klaus Vandemere and second by Ian Straight, that this meeting do now adjourn at?
Seven fifty one.
Thanks, Ken, seven fifty one, all in favor? Okay, and that's carried, so thanks everyone for this meeting and we'll look forward to the second.